That's well, it's the allowable, what the state allows you by statute allows you to go is the four percent extra. So you don't have to take the four percent. I mean, last year, I think you guys actually, if I recall, you actually decreased the tax rate just a spigot. But to say to people, look, we're doing really well, we've got three and a half million dollars in the bank, you don't need to take this much revenue.
Okay, so next steps here, help me understand this. We need to approve the ordinance at point one nine, that seems like a no point.
No.
Exactly the opposite.
Yeah, so.
My apologies.
I think so.
We've watched a good call for here to report.
So this is also about the new leader?
So we don't have a call for you on that.
Yeah, but I was gonna read two, I need to read two eighty eight.
All right. I'll take the question.
Let me ask you a question. So we go to point one seven eight or whatever it is. Next year, let's say whatever, can you raise it to point one eight zero next year?
Sure.
As long as you can move in the next four years as high as one point eight five.
You got it.
So, you know, with twenty twenty and COVID going right now, I'll just be honest, I don't really would look to put, add more to what it is at this point.
Right.
So point one seven eight would be perfect if we keep where we're at, and then if things change next year, then sure, we've got that opportunity, that four percent wherever we have.
There's a second chapter that Sean's gonna get to in a minute, some things that have been overlooked for a little while, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but you're gonna realize that we, there's plenty of thunder and lots of clouds, but the difference is, there's a lot of things that the city can do to be more efficient, to allow us, to allow the city to do just fine with point one seven eight. And we'll segue into that one more time, but the issue is, is that there's a lot of people, I think this would be safe time, at least a little bit of foreshadowing is, there's a lot of people who don't pay their taxes. They're not really all that penalized to some degree, because there's nobody really doing anything about it. I mean, last time, I mean, they ever tried to collect taxes in Creighton, Lord knows, but it certainly wasn't in the last decade. So that being said, you know, what is happening is, you've got this percentage of the population that knows that and doesn't do a thing about it. So with that also being said, there are penalties for people who choose not to pay their taxes when other, you know, law-abiding people are. So I pulled, again, for a frame of reference, I went through, like I said, Warsaw, Dry Ridge, Williamstown, Walden, I got all, everybody's rates, and they're all different, right, as far as what they choose in taxes based upon their economic status and where they are. So you guys need to decide how big of a hammer you want when people can't pay taxes, that's all. And Sean, and Sean will give you some clue, you might as well go ahead and tell him before we go.
Oh, yeah, so you'll see in your agenda talking about the delinquent property tax status or update going through, so I'll get in some numbers in a minute, but I think I need to read two eighty eights.
Yeah, two eighty eight is the one that should have been read first, because it's the only, two eighty seven.
Two eighty eight's the actual ordinance for the compensating rate. I didn't find it right, it's happened last minute, so.
Okay.
So just again, two eighty eight dash twenty twenty, so same introductory section with the ordinance itself, what does change is section two and section three. So real property, it discusses the compensating rate of point one seventy per one hundred dollars. And then in section three is personal property, which is at point one eight six. Each one's evaluated by PVA in different manners, and also, when NKAD took those numbers in regards to the evaluations and how they increase or decrease the associated rate. I did make one change on section four, for this one that I've read that I thought was a little bit misconstrued. If delinquent after Jan. one, or previous ordinance of Jan. two, so Jan. one is your due date of your taxes to pay your base with no fees, no fines, no penalties, is December thirty first, basically, or closing the first, but you guys, so that's a constant thing. Two percent discount still available by November fifteenth, was actually this year's a Sunday, so it will probably be the sixteenth, it's a Monday, but the interest rate's still five percent. You guys added last year a little section of two months to give them a little space to March first. I loved it in here, because it was your as well. It's gonna be kind of an accounting nightmare, a little bit, but just a heads up. And then after March first, you have a ten percent discount, and I wonder, I also added was the interest involved, plus any attorney's fees, legal fees, and then so and so. So it's the same ordinance, it's the correct rate in regards to what the evaluation is done by NKAD, so.
And when NKAD did this, they broke out new property?
Yes.
And this is the rate that you're talking about is only on property that is previously assessed.
Yeah, so Eli's group, PVA gave me the tax roll, did a hell of a job this year to get it out with all what was going on. So they had it, NKAD was great, within a few days it knocked it out, and I got a twenty-three page packet if you may, was to review it.
What was the amount of the new property?
The additions versus deletions?
No, it's a new property that was assessed. What was the amount of new property as opposed to the property that was already assessed?
Councilman, it was a hundred and seventy-four thousand, or a hundred and seventy-four million, excuse me, this year, it was a hundred and sixty-five last year.
On?
Home property.
On home property.
Yeah, so forty.
And then they increased it, how much?
In the eleven million.
Eleven million dollars on previously assessed property.
And then.
They show as far as new property.
New property, I don't think they break it out when they were sold, if they do, I didn't.
It should have, because the new property is not subject to recall, it's not subject to.
To change or, you know, revaluation.
It should have given us the new property as well.
Yeah.
Because that does not count against the amount that you would allow for recall.
Got it.
So the law says you get the new property and the previously assessed property.
It's, it has nothing to do with your or previously assessed, and in this report is, is subject to statute, is required to be given to a city every four years, so.
I understand, but it most certainly has to do with both, because it says the amount over new property under chapter one thirty-two, and it should have told us.
Under new assessment.
If it is new property that we're talking about, that leaves us, leaves us a problem that we're having right now with the compensating rate. So are they saying this is all previously assessed property?
I'm not sure.
Can we check that?
Yeah, we can check it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to check it, I can call Eli like more and see what that actually is gonna be answered. Yeah, he gave a good breakdown on his rule, tax rule and all the information, but I know there's a section that has additions, deletions type of thing, meaning like properties that were reduced because of different exemptions and/or.
Right, homestead exemption.
Yeah, exactly. Farm.
All I'd like to see is a distinction made between the new property assessment and property that was previously assessed.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the forward.
We just wanted to get that Jim, that first reading tonight on both of those, just in case.
Are we having to read two different ones?
Yes.
And we're gonna end up with one.
Yes. But you can't really, you can't even read, frankly, there's no point in reading the point nine one, because you can't do it, you gotta have hearing. So you really only need to read one ordinance, if you guys choose to amend the number, you can always do that, but you only really need to read one, the other one needs to be struck, because you can't enact it.
So for the record, two seventy-seven should never have been read, basically, or two eighty-eight should be the one that goes forward with some clarifications provided.
Unless it's not like the next reading, if the one seven eight is due to.
Anything.
The environment that we're in today, and nobody knows what the next multitude is gonna bring, and there's sense of putting added hardship on anybody, and I think the city doing fairly decent. Why don't we have a second reading to one seven eight?
And Sean, the one seven eight will bring in just as much money that we did last year.
Yes.
You know what I'd really like to see happen?
Don't be careful, Shane.
I'm gonna say it, you know I'm gonna say it.
Don't say it.
I'd like to see people sixty-five or over be exempt from taxes.
Well, they do have the homestead.
They do have.
They pop there.
I wish you could.
I'm not talking about, I wish I could.
It's just like in the.
That's what I'd like to see.
Sean, you wanna discuss the.
Yeah.
Link property.
Sorry for that, that was a recording. All right, so as Mr. Edmondson said a minute ago, there's been a small project going on within our office, and since the beginning of August, it's been brought to my attention that there's some open tax bills that are from the previous years, we did some evaluations, some discussion from the legal side to understand how far back we can go. So we understood that we're legally, I guess, held accountable to make sure all taxes are paid back through two thousand and ten. So started a project.
That substantial implications goes back ten years.
Yes, yeah, 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 right. So basically, what happened was, I was sort of going back to two thousand and ten through all books. Only way to tell our current situation is who's paid and not paid is basically if you have the receipt in the book saying it's stamped paid, and in the back of it, a lot of it had a check copy on the actual document, so that was the way forever, and that's still the way this year, there's no time to change anything in regards to more automated twenty-twenty kind of technology, but, so we went through page by page. Went through three books per year, so basically do the math, thirty books of tax bills. Pulled out a total, four hundred and thirty-two tax bills have not been paid in the past ten years.
Total or per year?
Total. Total dollar amount at this point in time that we're looking at is approximately forty thousand and seven hundred dollars that have not been paid from the property tax bills so far to date.
It does not include interest and penalties, which will take that number and just blow it away.
So just to let you guys know, I started the process late August, we've gone through the process, actually starting to actually send out letters to taxpayers and illustrate what's been not paid, what years, give them a copy of the tax bill, a letter on the front states, basically, you know, interest and penalties accrued, and gives them a summation. So so far, we've actually received about thirty-six hundred dollars in payments. Of the letters sent out, fifty-one hundred dollars is still owed on top of that, it's almost, you know, forty thousand plus still in the works of trying to be accumulated. It's a, I wouldn't say daunting, but it's a long process. It's every property, every property tax are accumulated, and that's what we're doing now, so we're trying to get everything just basically wrapped up and cleaned up.
Most of those personal property bills, most of that is that personal property or the most, or the part.
It's mostly real estate.
Mostly, mostly real property.
Yeah.
Okay. So when would we put a, when would we start putting liens on?
So here's the, here's the prior answer to your question, so when I first came on board, I asked the city clerk at the time, I said, I was very interested in insurance premium tax, because I litigated against all the insurance companies privately, and was successful in changing law for insurance premium tax, but what I found was, is that most cities had been cheated at insurance property tax, because they don't even know who's actually supposed to be paying, because oftentimes the boundaries were mixed up. The point was, I went to the city clerk and asked, is there any system to ensure that all state, state farm are paying these things quarterly? Of course, the answer is no, there wasn't, not a, and then the next question was, well, what are we doing about taxes, you know, property taxes, and I was informed that there were a few, that, just a few, that were not paying. We do not have a system in place, there's no software to ensure that taxes are paid. The only reason you would get back taxes is because there's no liens, I mean, this is what's so dangerous, there's not a lien for a tax, and when a person exchanged a piece of property, there was no one title search to be able to indicate that the property taxes were still owed. So what happened is, these taxes just kept going, that are owed, they run with the property, they don't run with the person, which is a huge, which is a bigger problem than it is, right? Figure that out. So obviously, there's quite a few taxes that are owed in the city of Creighton, and the answer to your question is that they're all enforceable, I mean, you file a lien, and then you ultimately, if they don't pay, you could foreclose on a lien when it gets significant enough, you don't want to foreclose on a hundred dollar lien, but you certainly would be entitled to foreclose on ones that have been abusing. There are, there are abusers that owe thousands of dollars.
And if there's a lien, they can't sell it until the lien's paid off.
You got it, and I haven't done a lien in a year, because, you know, it is what it is. So part of it is the policy of adding the interest back in, because I think our interest rate is, I forgot what our interest is, ten percent, I think, per annum?
Yes.
So a hundred dollar bill over ten years, and it adds up significantly, keeps compounding itself.
And to ensure the process is clean, we went to the, I went to the auditor themselves, asked them for a spreadsheet to tell me something simple I can calculate, base rate over how many years old, yada, 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 what's the fair rate to charge them, so I think it's a clean process. It's a long process, don't get me wrong, but it's gonna be, it's a fair process.
So we started with, the policy was ten years back, statute expires, you gotta hit the ten, you can come back to the nine a little later, you've gotta get to ten years we're gonna forget about, or they're gonna be gone, right? There are people, arguably, that haven't paid taxes in some properties in twenty years, they collected, they're paying, so they're getting all the services, saving all the benefit not paying the tax, there's nobody there to keep them accountable. And how that oversight happened, it is what it is, I mean, we have got to go with what we can statutorily collect, and that's the emphasis, and Sean and I talked about it, it's a daunting task, it's a magnet task, so there needs to be, there really needs to be software allocated and purchased to be able to put in, when a person walks in the door, so you know exactly what taxes are.
And that next step, we won't be having this year, of course, but I have some plans on a layout, December, January, and beyond for next tax season, that we can do, anyone can collect, buy debit card, credit card, online, that kind of stuff, to automate the process, make it easier on people if they need to, but also there's software that Alex mentioned, that you basically can actually start doing your analysis for you, where am I with things, here's my accumulations, develop, bike charts, whatever, to show you what's going on, but.
Have you checked into that software?
Yeah, yeah, on both accounts, and we'll lay it out together.
What's the deadline to get some, to go back to ten years, when is now that we're gonna be getting nine years?
January first.
January first, so we gotta do, put liens on houses that have been, the properties of ten years.
Yes, you have to file our liens.
Four January first.
Right, you have to file your liens. We got a lot of work between October three and January first, we just fall off the books. It's bad.
One question, there's a lot of good work looking at some data here, there's two numbers that jumped out, one was sixty-two thousand, I think I heard, possible revenue in four hundred and thirty offenses, I guess, or shortfalls in, if you had to look at the data, it's probably not four hundred and thirty-two one offs in one year, probably a grouping of ten years of offenders, if you had to say, what fraction of that money of repeat offenders, have you got a cut? I'm not looking for an exact number, I'm just trying to wrap my head around four hundred and thirty-two.
I mean, there is offenders that have, you know, ten years back, and so that's ten tax bills for one property, right?
Is that majority or?
Um, yeah, I'd say up to a quarter is like that mindset, it could be five years, four years, three years, but a lot of nineteenth's, for whatever reason, a lot of sixteen's as well, I'm finding, but I got it stacked on my desk, I didn't want to bring it all out tonight.
Just curiosity, for the amount of, everything that's gonna be in the future once this all gets written, so.
Nice thing about your lien is, it's a super lien, you file your lien, you get paid first, even before the mortgage, so every dot, I mean, as soon as you put it on, you're gonna get paid. Imagine how many property owners, in theory, are owning a piece of property, they have no idea the taxes are owed on, it's a, it's a problem, figure out how to handle it.
So I'll give an update every, every council meeting, if you guys have any questions during the month, please reach out. Yeah, one update for the financial side, this heads up, we have an auditor coming in on site, November fourth and fifth now, so it's been confirmed, a couple weeks behind most years, but with COVID, it's been in our light, starting in July and stuff, so it's actually, we're in good shape, so just that's it.
Next up, under new business, we have an application for a tax amendment that is in front of you, also the diagram of the, of the property owned by Mr. Phil Dalton that has three. Dalton Plaza Car Wash is trying to get amended to storage units in that, I think it's under Highway Commercial, yes, one eleven Main Street is the address, and as you can see, he's trying to get this application approved through the city, after, if so be, if the council decides to do that, then they, we would forward that to the Planning Commission, and they will hold a public hearing and make that recommendation and forward it back to the city. We will have to have two readings of the ordinance to approve the tax amendment, so once it's approved, and Mr. Dalton filed with the Board of Adjustments.
Has it already been forwarded to the Planning Commission?
No, it has to be, we have to get an ordinance together, and then you guys will vote. This is the tax amendment application, we'll get, you know, we'll get the ordinance together, if you guys decide that you're gonna vote on that and move that forward, then we can do that.
Well, we could say with the Planning Commission, review first, that's a good idea.
What was that?
We could, and send it to the application, take the application, give it to the Planning Commission, let them review, and then it comes back with the recommendation.
Becky Rehhal sent me the information with planning zone, and the obvious route is, so make sure I'm not misunderstanding, the city will need to send a request to the Planning Commission to add the self-storage units to the zone. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing, then make the recommendation, forward that back to the city. She advised me today, let me know what, what we decided, because she said the city will have to have two reading of the ordinance to approve the tax amendment, once it's approved, then Mr. Dalton can file with the Board of Adjustments, so.
She's saying that, so checks and then the rest.
You got, well, she's saying that the city should apply for it, not him, so that's right.
So we send the.
If your policy, if you guys decide that this is worth considering, then your policy, your resolution is, is to go ahead and apply for tax amendment, but we don't, not only it's just a disre.
And that way, it saves a little time, you know, it was probably, but you guys look at that, what do you, what do you decide to do?
I think it's a great idea, I think the car wash.
But just remember, that everywhere in that zone, once you include that tax, now you've got plenty of time to consider that, this Planning Commission will come back, but it's just not that, it's any property that's in that zone would be also going with those storage units, so you guys, you guys figure that out later.
But if we recommend that, for most likely, we're pretty likely.
More likely. If you're asking for the applications because you want it, so technically, they probably are gonna recommend yes.
I'd say we move forward, because the car wash has been vandalized heavily in the last twenty years, and you can't keep that going. Right now, it's just a teenage hangout, so if we put doors and walls up, it's gonna be better than when we got that.
That's right, I think so too.
Okay, do, I mean, vote on sending this application to.
I think we vote on.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Make a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Before the application to the Planning.
Before the application to the Planning and zoning. I second me so much.
I second it.
Mr. Doosie, sorry, Mr. Priscilla?
No.
And then Mr. Roberts?
Yep.
Okay, I have four yeses, one no, one absence, a motion carries?
This time we have a law enforcement report.
Yeah, basically, just making a comment, if everybody look at that and see, all cuts on the highway, so.
We can share.
We leave this, what zone did you just make the recommendation that we allowed us to be in, so it's not here?
This is on there, it's on that first.
Article ten, section ten.
You're saying you want to change the Highway Commercial Zone to allow, anywhere in the Highway Commercial Zone? That's, that's what you're saying?
That's what they, that's the resolution they have.
Okay. It's not, it's not all Highway Commercial, it's just that.
No, no, that's the point I was trying to make, because you gotta be careful, because it may have an unintended consequence, all of a sudden, you might have a Highway Commercial, and people are throwing up storage garages all over your city, based upon where that zone is, you know.
Any of that's Highway Commercial, we recommend this, those who know that.
But the recommendation is, the application is being sent, it'll come back here for approval, and so you guys will have another shot at this to look at it.
Well, why can't we just make it that property, his property?
It doesn't work, it's called spot zoning, it's illegal, you can't just pick his. I mean, yeah.
Look, we've got to do something, man, I hate to say this, but that, that car wash is a nice, nice.
You could make it a conditional use, which is, is much be, would be less safer, so that it has to meet certain conditions in order to be approved, not just a tax amendment, you're gonna change the language to make it permitted use, which is very dangerous, because you don't have any oversight over it. So maybe the better way to look at it is to consider it, which is, per Priscilla's point, you actually look at it to make sure the impact on the neighborhood, commercial zone, and if you decide to make it a conditional use, and every time somebody applies for it, the Board of Adjustment will hear it, and then you put that in their hand, you put it in the board's hand and make the decision, but here's the issue, Board of Adjustment comes, there's a hearing before the Board of Adjustment, all adjacent proprietors have to be notified, get elected, and there's a public hearing, so you have people in input, not elected officials, but people on the board who make that decision. It's certainly a much better oversight. If you just tell Planning and Zoning, that we want this tax amendment, but Planning and Zoning would think you want it, it could be.
So we want the tax amendment, but we want conditions.
You might want to table it just until you understand the ramifications, I haven't looked at the zoning map to see exactly how big of an area you're gonna permit storage garages, the unintended consequences could be, you may run on your main drag, you have three hundred units across your city, I mean, is that really what you want? You understand what I'm saying? It's not, you can't look at it just this isolated context of just this building. It's just a lot to make.
Yes, yes, you guys wanna tell me what it is?
Yeah, let's table it, what do you guys think? Until we find out the map and zone and.
I'm happy to look at it, you know, and kind of report back and say, okay, this is, these are the properties that are potentially, the land would be eligible for storage garage. We all know that storage garages technically aren't in, shouldn't be in the main drag of the city, they're usually on the outskirts, the industrial zones, you know, where they need it, you don't want that to be, you get off the exit, and there's four hundred storage loters.
Part of that, to your point, part of the risk could be the property for the trailer courts were, that one of the options there was just plain Highway Commercial, which means that could turn into pure storage lot, or, spot zoning is dangerous, but the conditional use, even though it's extra effort, it might be the right thing to do here, so tabling it to see them out, Paul, I think is a great idea.
Thank you.
So would we have a motion to table it or just?
No.
Sorry, Todd, we didn't, we didn't.
Any good, Tom? I'll, I'll add something to what you were talking about, I mean, I know with us at the sheriff's office, we use a program called GUTS, you get a tax bill, it's got the barcode, pops in, and we get a report every day of what people have paid their property taxes, and, and we can tell you how much money we've collected, how much percentage of the tax base taxes that we have in the county that we've collected so far. It's a program that just, like I said, barcode, it scans it, pops up the property, tells me how much your taxes are, and it takes it out of books, and it tells me the percentage that it's been collected. Now, I don't know if that program would work for a city, but what we use at the sheriff's office to collect taxes that way, we know at the end of the year who hasn't paid their taxes, and we send that to the county attorney, county clerk, so, I mean, call the sheriff when he gets back from vacation and ask him, he knows more than I do, much more about GUT than I do.
That's how you run the city.
That's exactly, he does that, I do other stuff, you know, I will, I don't have the exact number, but I know from last month, when you asked for extra for more enforcement, I know we've written over sixty, between sixty and eighty citations in the city, written for speeding, various different citations, for different things that go on in the city. I don't understand, you got the reporter in front of you, why it says only six traffic stops, because I know we've written.
This is only August, it's August first to August thirty-first, that's why.
That's why. So it's not September, okay, that makes sense then. But anyway, you can look at that, see that, you know, we, sixteen accidents inside the city, ten alarms, which is either alarms going off, or the highlights of seven B and E's, which neighbor called in, somebody's trading house, we get there, it's the owner, he got back from vacation early, nine-one-one hangups were seven, you all can, if there's any questions on what those numbers are, or a question on what that means, just let me know, and I'll answer those questions for you. I mean, I will tell you again that we did hire a new deputy over the last month, September ninth, I think he started, our three new recruits, our three new deputies, they're not recruits any longer, they've been at this a year now, they graduated the academy October twenty-ninth, their first official day on the road, back from the academy November second, so we'll have three more deputies in roughly fifteen days to be on the road, so you should, you should start seeing, you know, more deputies around.
I have a question. Who is your drug, drug task force officer, detective?
We don't have a drug task force necessarily, we refer that to Kentucky State Police, they do have a drug task force officer.
Do you know who that is?
I don't want you to. I do, but I'm, I called post, I don't want to just say it out.
Okay, well, I did call the post, and they gave me wrong information.
Okay, I can give it to you.
You give it to me after the meeting?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Time is here, any way that we can get an arrest number?
Tom, is there any way that we can get an arrest number? I know that's a field.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to figure out what, I haven't added to the report. I, I don't, like I said, it goes through the haze, I don't know why arrests wouldn't be on here. I mean, they should be able to put that on the report and tell me where we arrest from. So it shouldn't be that hard to get.
I also want you to remind people that Grand County Tech participates in the Crime Stoppers too. So people know something that's going on, you can call Crime Stoppers and get them to hint, and they'll share it with the law enforcement officer, and you might make some money.
And, and I mean, we have another, we have an officer injured right now who's hurt, so we're down even one further than we were before. Because he's off towards calf muscle, working a traffic accident over in a bank.
So how many do we have now?
With the new guy, we have nine. But we'll be back up to 13 once our recruits get out of the academy. And our new, the new deputy we hired is a 20-year veteran. He's not, he's not a rookie, so he's 20-year veteran, can't remember other county.
What's his name?
Jim Step, James Step.
Oh, yeah, I know Jim.
What will your breakdown be on personnel per shift?
We'll have four on first, we'll have five on seconds, and we'll have four on thirds, once everybody is back on the ship. The shifts are going to.
Thank you, John.
All right.
First time.
Chief Lee Burton, Department of Labor.
Okay, I'm trying to make this as short as possible, but we do have a bit of information put out. First off, we are down one engine right now due to mechanical failure. You'll also notice that I've not passed out our monthly response. We're having an argument with Spectrum, trying to get our freaking internet up. It's frustrating. But as soon as we can get those numbers, because everything's stored on a cloud that we can't sign into right now. So as soon as I can get Spectrum to assist us, you will have those numbers. But you will see that in the last couple of weeks, we have worked several large effort fires. Twice on Case Lane, we've had some brush and wood fires that have been five and six hours. So the engine laying down on that fire, we had no choice but to get it taken, and it's in Vogelpool right now being repaired. Not really sure what they're going to find, but they said it will be back up in the next week or so. Want to remind everybody, there is a burn ban on as of October 1. On our website, we've got the burn ban detail. So you cannot burn until 1800 hours or 6:00 PM. It must be attended. It must have a way of extinguishing it, being extinguished while it is lit, and it must have somebody with it at all times. At 6:00 AM, all fires have to be out. No burning after 6:00 AM. This will go till December. So this is what's going to end up with a lot of our calls for the next couple of months, illicit burns.